Call for order at 6:08 PM on Wednesday, October 13. Okay, now we're going down to a non-public session. No, we're not non-public. That will be called later, I'm sorry. We're going to go through the minutes. Does anybody have any changes to the September 8 public board minutes?
I did, I had a couple of changes. I can just give them to Molly. So one was just a spelling of names. And on the first paragraph in the Principal's Report, Ready Math has been adopted. And just strike everything about it being piloted because it's not being piloted anymore.
That's true.
So just Ready Math has been adopted. On the second paragraph, just clarification that there've been some hiccups with busing. So parents have been asked to transport children to, to clarify, two cross-country meets. That's not a, that's not a general busing issue. It's just a, a busing issue with cross-country.
Which paragraph is that?
The second paragraph of Principal's Report. I just didn't want people to misread that there's broader.
Oh, with cross-country, yep.
Yeah, so parents have been asked to transport their children to the cross-country meets.
Yeah, across the board.
Yep. And then I just had one other change on number nine, the business and financials. It said, "Due to an HVAC project not being completed, there will be approximately 180,000 returned to the taxpayers." If we could just add clarification that it was not done due to higher-than-anticipated project costs or due to inadequate funding and not just because we chose not to do it, but the reason why we didn't do it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we could put...
So either something like, "Due to higher-than-anticipated project costs."
Yes, "Due to higher project costs." "Due to unanticipated project costs."
Yeah.
We'll use that verbage.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, um, do you want to make a motion to approve the minutes as adjusted?
I make the motion to approve the minutes as adjusted. I can say that.
Can you? All right. Jen?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The amended September 8 public board meetings have been approved. Any changes for the September 8 non-public board meetings? No?
No.
Okay. A motion approved?
Yep. I move too for the non-public meeting minutes of September 8.
I can second that.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Have you voted?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Non-public board meetings are now approved. Okay, so we're going to old business. We're looking at our board goals. We need to finalize these goals and make sure that they are in place. So if anybody's had time to review them, if there are any changes that need to be made.
No, how are we, how are we moving forward with them? I'm assuming we're gonna...
We're just going to approve them as our goals for this year.
Okay, but then we have to actually action on them, yeah.
That's true. I think our main goal for tonight is just basically to approve what we...
That's, that's fine. And then we can, we can actually put it on the agenda to discuss them and divvy them up and figure out how we're going to do it next time.
Okay, I'll make the motion if you approve the board goals for 2021, 2022.
One second. One second.
Any discussion? Any changes? Now, have you voted?
Allison?
Yeah.
Jen?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The board goals for the 2021, 2022 year have been approved. Okay, any new business? I think we were discussing that briefly. Do you want to bring that up?
Um, yep, we can. Can I pop back to Principal's Report? So we can...
Sure. Oh, I almost stopped, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. No problem.
I'm losing my mind.
You're still in California time.
Okay, Principal reports.
Yes. So again, I reported under our three core values of positive community culture, meaningful learning, and health and well-being. Under the positive community culture, I've talked about our Thursday afternoons, which we're calling "Community Time," and we're inviting different members of our community to school to connect with our students. Our last couple of weeks have been super exciting and are going to be really hard to top, particularly the K-9 unit that was here a couple Thursdays ago is really exciting. It's been years since we've had the K-9 unit here at school doing any sort of demonstrations. So that was exciting. Deputy George Abel from the Rockingham County Sheriff's Department brought his K-9 saber and was, they were able to do some pretty impressive demonstrations of obedience and evidence recovery. And the kids asked some really great questions about, about saber and trying to understand the difference between a police-working dog and a pet. So that was really great. They had some great quotes about those. These are some of the things that were in their thank-you notes to Deputy Abel. So I do think that was exciting. This past Thursday, we had our local fire department took out some of their trucks and the ambulances, and we had a few of our, our local firemen here to talk with us. So it was great to be able to connect with some community people again, having not been able to do that for a while. So a little field trip on Thursday to the fire department was a lot of fun. And it was obviously Fire Prevention Week, so they were able to, you know, give some nice swag to our, our kids with some hats and stickers and coloring books and all of that kind of stuff and just promote the message of fire safety for them. Under meaningful, meaningful learning, I highlighted the project that our third graders have launched about their study of Native Americans. This is a lengthy unit that they spend a lot of time on during the year. And one of the questions that they're trying to answer is how and why were the Native American cultures so diverse? They're talking a lot about geography. They're talking a lot about natural resources and how different tribes of people came to be depending on the land in which they lived. So there's been a lot of great learning going on in third grade, and they're just diving into designing their museum projects. So they'll be presenting those in a few weeks. And then under health and well-being, I was highlighting our partnership with the local Exeter Lions Club, which again, hasn't been able to be here in a few years. So they were able to do the eye screening for all of our students and identify any potential vision issues for our children and then be able to alert parents to be able to follow up with their local doctors and helping to be able to detect some of those early eye concerns. So that was positive and well-received by families. You know, Nurse Heather reached out afterwards. They were appreciative of, of the initial screening. So that's a good partnership to continue.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm. So new business? Did you want to do that at the roof, under new business or under financials? Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'd rather do it under new business than financials. It's just basically going where we stand and this is going to interrupt, so...
Yep, it's connected, for sure. So as we've been gathering quotes for our gym roof, which we slated on our facilities project to be approved for next budget year, we have discovered that it needs to become more of a priority than waiting another budget cycle because of the fact it's taking almost a full year to get materials. So if we wait until our July 1 to commit to materials, then we're looking at July 2023 before we can actually do something. And two more winters with the gym roof is not advisable. So, so we have gotten three quotes back. What some of the contracts are looking at is perhaps a percentage deposit now out of this financial year and then paying upon completion in our next financial year. And so I would like the board to consider doing that sort of split with the contract so that we can secure getting on that queue of building materials, which are taking eight to 12 months. So that's something that I think we need to, to talk a little bit more. We do have money in our maintenance and repair line to be able to do a 20 or 30% deposit on the contracts this year.
Okay.
And then pay them in full perhaps next year. So we'll still have money in the, in the budget for the roof. We'll just be doing the deposit out of this year.
Right. So I guess my, my thing is that we're looking at doing some improvements this year with some money. How long, how soon do they need it? Long, because we vote on the new budgets.
Not till March.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah. So I, I, I know the big list that we looked at last year.
Yep.
It would be my recommendation that this roof, the roof goes right to the top of, of the list. There's about 40 feet of boards under the vinyl that have completely rotted. So it's, it really needs to go to our highest priority.
What did you say, board, what?
There's about 40 feet of board under the vinyl that has rotted. So it really, it really needs to go to our highest priority.
Okay. What would we be bumping to do that? Just out of curiosity, I mean, if it's our priority.
It may be something like, and again, this is up for discussion, but it might be, you know, something like the floor tile in the primary wing or...
Just something not as necessary.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just...
Okay.
A lesser priority.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we can work around that. It's unfortunate that we promised out now and we have no extra money. We could use some of that for the deposit.
Yeah, well, it wasn't until we got roofers up there trying to give us quotes.
That's the way life works. That's the way life works.
Yeah. We knew it was, we knew it was ready to be repaired. I think just the, the large delay in the material is, is adding a whole nother winter. That isn't a great idea.
The supply chain is messed up and it's going to take quite a while before it gets back to normal, for sure. So I agree with you. I don't think we should wait because we don't know what the future holds.
Yeah, so I'd love to be able to put a deposit or, you know, we still have to, we have to look at the three contracts and...
I was going to say, so why don't we put that as an agenda item for next board meeting to get, you know, some more details on that. And we, we might want to, we need to, to put down and then let's look at our projects for this year and see what we need to do to take care of that. And then we can take a vote on it and get it done.
Okay.
How's that?
Yeah, yeah, because we definitely want to have some sort of action in the, in the next month to get in line for materials.
Perfect. We're only going to be 100% sure of that. Okay, we'll do that. Okay, anything else? Is anybody else having a new business? Okay, public input. Now's the time for anybody in the audience that has any questions to give their input. You can bring the mic, I suppose.
There's one right over there.
I'm really struggling. Okay, I guess we'll, we'll give a public input. And I don't have anything in general correspondence that I am aware of, but we do... And then now we're up to Molly. You're up.
Hello.
For business and financials and that manifest.
Okay, so for the manifest, they're all signed. Thank you. Before I get to the current year financials, I do have one additional question for you. It's really great news. So we get adequacy from the state to partially offset the budget cost and then the rest is raised through the tax rate. So the adequacy is based off of a formula and the state made a statutory change to the formula related to ADM, which is the average daily membership. And it's just one component of the formula. So with that, every year they give everyone a preliminary adequacy number several months prior and then they give an updated number right before the tax rate. And so they've updated the number. And they've actually given us a choice this year because they've made the statutory change that the districts can hold a public meeting, then have an annual meeting, and then everything. But it's very, very time-consuming and it would also delay the tax bills in the town. So it would, we'd have to work with the town if we wanted to use it. But we, you have the option to accept the money to be able to expend it. Or you could choose to do nothing and it would fall to the tax rate this November. So it's essentially almost like increasing the fund balance from last year, the effect that it has on the tax rate. Or you could vote to accept and expend it. But if we chose to do that, it would have to be a very short process. We'd have to have a public hearing, an annual meeting, old-town style, like Brentwood and Stratum do on their normal budget cycle. And then it would delay the tax bills in the town of Kensington delaying payment of all of our taxpayers. So it would be something we'd have to consider. So the amount for Kensington is $96,432.32. So we would be looking, we're looking for guidance from each of our boards to determine if you'd like to have that process. I do, I do, we did work with the attorney to get the timeline and he drew this timeline up for me yesterday. So even yesterday, it would have already been the traditional meeting couldn't happen before 11:02. And we typically like to have the tax bill out by 11:01 for payment by 12 months. You have to get the 30-day notice. So even as of yesterday, starting the process, the tax bills would be delayed.
Okay, I just need, I need clarification. So 96K under the, this system would go back to the town or would go into the budget?
It, so it would either go back to the town in the November tax rate by lowering the tax rate or you could vote to accept the money to be able to expend the money.
If we wanted to spend it, but then, then we have to do the meeting and everything. And I'm sorry, this is, this is money that is not typically, what, where did this come from?
So it's, it's a statutory change in the funding formula at the state. And so this is not a typical...
This is like extra, extra, okay.
This is, yeah, so this is a stat, yeah, statutory change from the state.
So we take no action, this just goes back to the town period?
Correct.
Okay, so what does the board need to do?
So we just have direction from the board whether you'd like to hold the meeting or if you'd like to do nothing and let it fall through the tax rate.
Okay, I don't think I need to make a motion. I think we can just have a discussion.
If we, if we, if we were to accept the budget and then not lose it, instead go back to the town like this year?
Correct. It would basically increase the incentive fund balance at the end of this year.
Okay, but if we do nothing, then it'll, it'll help the taxes this year?
Correct.
Okay.
And it will not delay the tax rate.
And it will, oh, right, because it would delay the tax bill. Yeah.
Right. So my, my thing is, I don't, I'd rather just give it back to the town.
I, I, that's, that's how I feel too.
We already gave 180K back to the town. Why are we going to all of a sudden do this? I know we have a roof project.
No, but we have money in the, we have money in, yeah, for that.
We can mess around with things, but that's what I'm trying to...
And honestly, I think that, I think anything we can do to help the tax bill this year, like, that would, that's great.
This is going to take more time. We're going to have to vote. We don't know if we can...
I don't care about the time, but I do, I do think that the bottom line, it's better to do that.
Yeah, but there's always that thing, if we have the town thing, it's to be approved by...
Well, and that, that would delay the, delay the taxes. But I think that this is a good year to help do anything we can.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
We've been making the recommendation to all the boards to essentially do that way.
Oh, okay.
And so all the boards so far have chose to do that.
Yeah, I, I'm on board.
I think Exeter's motion is actually to do nothing.
I, I also move, I move we do nothing.
So I guess as a board, I'll make a motion that we approve, that we give that money right directly back to the town.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Have you voted, Allison?
Yeah.
I vote yes. So the board approves the 96K to go back to the taxpayers.
Perfect, okay. And then the next piece was just the standard financial. I have not included that typical month-over-month report that I do since the first one that I have anything to compare it to. So you are looking very healthy. At this point in time, does anybody have any questions? We have encumbered what we know to date. So as the year progresses, the actual will grow, so will the income increase? Anything will change? But did anybody have any questions today?
No, that wasn't in the packet or...
Oh, I sent it in a separate email.
Oh, oh, I don't think I got that.
I did not either.
Oh, you didn't either?
No.
The financial summary?
Yeah.
Oh, it was in the packet.
It was in the packet.
I have it right here.
I didn't, because I looked through the packet. I'm wondering if it didn't download all the way because I, I remember thinking, I thought there were more pages to this, but then it just ended after, maybe after the Principal's Report. I'll, I'll re-download it, but let me actually look.
This one was in the packet.
Let me take a look.
Yeah, I still have a healthy line of balance left. I don't have any questions. And you're saying that we're trackifying or not?
Yeah.
So right, so right now we've encumbered everything. So all dollars we've encumbered.
Right.
Everything that we know to date. And we still have 181,000.
Yep, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's fine.
And we don't foresee anything cropping up? There isn't any, we've got things to take care of those things, but I'm just...
No, I actually see it even getting even better because I think we're going to have another health trust surplus. I don't know exactly until that, so this will just increase the effectiveness of the program.
Okay, so the school are in good shape, by the way.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
That's fine.
We need more good news.
Yeah. This is, this is a fun meeting.
Okay, committee report. I don't think we have any details yet. We should. I have a, my first policy meeting tomorrow evening. I'll get to miss more of my lovely PBR. Anything with safety and security? Wasn't there a meeting?
Yep, we did have a meeting, yep. Yep. So I think the, one of the biggest discussions, and Becky, you know, was there for this part as well, is just kind of making sure that we have, we work with law enforcement to kind of have a contingency plan around our safety and security at meetings. And it seems like we've established that. So I'm trying to think of what else was discussed.
I think there was a large discussion geared maybe more towards middle and high school students and their sort of mental well-being and making sure that they're feeling connected. And I think COVID took a different sort of toll on our older students in the district. And so I think schools are just paying, not that we weren't paying attention before, but really making sure we're paying attention to students and their social and emotional needs coming back into the buildings this year. There's a lot of different team, bit teams and crisis teams and...
Global crisis.
A little app that's being monitored on a 24-hour basis. So we're really just trying to look at security and that bigger sense of emotional security too for students.
That's it?
I don't, I'm just trying to think if there was anything that was sort of earmarked dollar-wise for us to just think about.
That was the part they mentioned, potentially adding that to our own individual budgets was a portion for safety and security, so...
And I'm not sure it is actually a separate line item in our budget. I think the safety and security falls under maintenance and repair. So I don't know if we want to...
We can add a, of a line like Exeter, Exeter Elementary, who's just adding one for maintenance.
And that's what they were suggesting for any unexpected...
So that anything that's specific to, whether it's facilities, safety, or some of those social, emotional safety things that we've talked about.
Yeah, so I want to get clarification on budgeting and what respect we're talking about. Like article harbor, like that with the ball?
Yep, ball and balls, new walk, new radios.
Radios, batteries for radios, all that kind of stuff. I said that some of that can kind of sneak up on you.
And so that, for just those expenses, but social, emotional is not being put back?
Well, right now it's not a separate line in our budget. So all of those things are found in various lines.
That's what I mean. That's what I wanted to make clarification, that if we do something like that, it would be more actual harbor.
Well, I think that's up to the board, yeah. So we do, we are required each year to do Alice training. And so there's a cost associated to that. So that sort of training would appear on that sort of line.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think also the social, emotional piece could fall. Like you're saying, Becky, they're, they're found, they're housed in different areas. And so the suggestion was...
Well, this is kind of getting muddy though. That's what I'm trying to think because we, prior years, they were less, it was tied into the SAU budget, correct? And then the training, they would hook it down to the individual districts. So now they're trying to say, is that going to... In some sense, when we have a general budget for like the middle school and high school and the SAU, those budget dollars from the towns are kind of small in comparison to our town budget. So it's divvied out across the towns and it's less of an impact. My concern is if we take responsibility for this, our budget is going to take a hit.
It's more, it sounded more like they were suggesting putting an extra line item in there to ensure to have that buffer. So if something comes up that we have that...
Kind of like the Warren articles we have for special education or senior years.
So I think it's a way to easily identify how much do we spend at KES on safety and security. Because right now it is in eight different places. And so we do have like the Alice training in our budget and we do pay for our portion of it from the SAU, but it's right now found in the office of the principal. So if we move that training...
This is like de-mudying the water.
Yeah, I think it's just a way to...
It's an organization.
Yeah, it's actually organizing it better, yeah.
All right, that, that makes it clear. Okay, we can have a discussion, I guess, more about that.
Yeah.
Do we, what do we have to do to add a different line? Do we just ask you to do it or do we have to take official action?
No, no, I just type it in, I just add.
Great.
Yeah, I was going to say, we can, when we do the budget process for next year, because that's when it's going to be on the, that could be something.
Well, we're doing it right now.
Yeah, we're doing it.
So, yeah, we could probably just add that on.
Yes, we can add another line on it. And just for a point of reference, I know the only other district at this point in time that's adding it with a separate line is Exeter Elementary. And they're either funding it with 10,000 total, five and five for a new treatment and shoot, or 10,000, I think it's five and five. So just as a point of reference, like Allison said, it's more so like the walkie-talkie number. He's all that.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's fine. That's, that's fine. I was just, didn't want to.
Sorry, I wasn't explaining it.
Yeah, you want to take our budget to take a hit. That's, that's all.
No, it's more organizing.
It's organizing.
Organizational line, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
It's like adding a bucket with those things in. That makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, it does. Okay. Anything else on safety and security? Are we good?
Trying to think. The biggest discussion was just about, you know.
Social, emotional.
Well, that and the, you know, making sure we feel safe and secure at our meetings as well.
Okay.
Lots of good stuff happening, actually.
And board of selectmen?
I haven't, I haven't been able to go to a meeting. And we, we keep having other meetings on those Monday nights or, or other things are happening. It's just been, it's, yeah.
Joint tiers, we have not had an official meeting. We just had that quick meeting that we talked about last. Is it possible or is it, or is it, no, it was a, we were doing contract negotiations.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Yes.
So we did have a quick meeting about this information about masking. And then that went out. So that's been addressed.
Okay. I was gonna, I.
I was going to mention.
I was going to mention, so there's a new committee that's been.
Like a temporary committee. Yeah.
The COVID transition. And I thought maybe we should put that under each month as a report or.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say that when he's done listing ones that are there, I think we should add that for now.
Because you.
Yeah, we had our, yeah. I'll, I'll explain what it is. Okay, so, so there's, so there is now a COVID transition committee that is temporary to, to try to prevent the craziness last week from happening again, which wasn't, it wasn't Dr. Ryan's fault. The information was incorrect. And so, but, but it gave us an opportunity to realize that there needs to be more structure when it comes to the transition, when we transition from one policy to the next in terms of masking or in terms of something like that. So, so we decided to get together and, or they decided to create a committee. So it, it comprises, there's one board member from every board. There, I believe all principals are involved. There's a nurse. There are a few community members. And we're going to get together and have a Zoom call every Wednesday at 8:30. And so today was our first one. And really, we really just talked about the sorts of things that we want to address and goals and organization and things like that. So we're just getting started. So, yeah, just so that we can be better prepared next time when a change needs to be made.
Excellent. And superintendent evaluation.
Haven't met. Right. So can, can we ask to officially add that, the COVID transition?
Yes.
To the, okay, great.
Committee reports, can we add COVID? COVID team, call it?
Yep.
I think it is COVID transition team.
COVID transition.
Because at one point we were optimistic that we will transition out of.
Yeah, some of the things we were talking about, I don't know if, well, we were talking about, you know, once masks are optional, thinking about what the other mitigation factors we have and if, if any would need to be changed or strengthened or something. So those are conversations that we're going to be having coming up, kind of just cementing a little bit more what the plan is.
Okay, pupil-related matters. Anything, Becky? Anything with personal?
Nothing new since last week, unfortunately. We still have open positions that we are hiring for.
Okay. It seems to be a problem.
It does seem to be a problem. Yep.
Okay. So I guess we're done. Next meeting will be note number 10. 2021. I do know that, I think we want to discuss a couple of things in non-public. So I guess I'll take a motion. I think we have to adjourn and go into non-public. But I don't know what the. Is it chapter, is it 91A, 311?
Well, why don't, why don't we close this one out and then we can decide what we're going in.
To non-public.
Are we not, I don't think we're supposed to adjourn this meeting until we're done with non-public. But we can move, we can move to go into non-public, but we need to know which is the RSA number.
I don't know what you're talking about, so.
Oh, we have to go into an RSA number for non-public. It addresses, yeah, I don't have the definition.
Are we talking about contract negotiations?
Yes.
Again, okay. So then, then you're going in under A.
Okay. So we're going to go into non-public under 91A.
So I knew that we'd go into non-public under 91A.
I can second that.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. So we're going to go into non-public for 91A.
Wait, let's vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes. And then I'm going to make the motion that we adjourn from public at six.
Well, we have to adjourn from public after non-public is over. So we'll, we'll go back into public and then we.
Yeah, I always forget that. You're right. Okay, so we're officially in.